Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice of our own.
We were just talking about the new microphone system here in the chambers and you guys picked up on this, but as I turned around and faced the wall, the sound was totally different.
Yeah.
Facing that.
You can actually hear something.
So it'll be interesting. Mr. Cross, let's start with you.
I've settled an agreement, Jeff, that needs to be authorized and approved. This is on a small EOC claim that was adjusted by our here. Here. I've given you more than you need. Basically, a $2,500 settlement, which is a new settlement.
Twenty-five hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
Rising from employment matter to prosecutor's office. And I've got Cam, she can work on getting the document that checks out. I sent a draft of the animal welfare consulting agreement. Jeff's already given me one comment that a change I'll make, and that'll be delete reference to the unincorporated areas and just make this applicable to all areas of the county, you know, which one thing. So I'll give you copies and we don't need to take final action on today. I'll also provide it to the city attorney with copies and I'm waiting for their feedback too.
Okay.
And I have not sent anything basic, so someone be responsible for getting her a copy.
Yeah, we can, we'll get that.
Unless you can do the final draft one.
Okay. I'll even let her know comments on this.
You want to go ahead and send it out with us?
As long as she understands. Title of the road, I think. You got my emails this morning. I see Gordon's here. I don't think I'll be taking action on that today. I share your email with me. I agree with you as to the issue that was raised last week by Mike Sharp. So I don't know, unless there's any questions, I would propose that the ordinance at the fair, which I've already begun, would basically be a simple matter of affirming the preliminary findings based upon the evidence of the record and matters discussed at the public hearing, which my notes didn't really indicate anything substantive. We've not been provided with this second survey or additional survey that the owner said he was going to provide. I take it.
No.
I've not seen it.
So let me try to clarify because my understanding is that the legal mechanism for us making this a county road is that it's been used as a county road for in excess of 20 years.
It's been used as a public roadway within the county in excess of 20 years.
Okay, and so under that, under that point of law, we would just be making what is currently, what has currently been used as a public roadway.
Correct. In fact, we can't go beyond the actual scope of use without implicating potential issues relating to takings and domain, which I don't think.
And we don't want to do that.
I don't think at this point, the, no, it was never the original intent. I don't think circumstances have developed that would require that approach be considered at this point at least.
And the only exception to that, Gordon, on your map is what was already a planned roadway.
Correct. There's one lot that was a one-lot subdivision on the west side of the road. It's dedicated to 25-foot right away, which when you go back and review, I didn't question how they did that, but it is a dedicated right away. So when we made our apparent right away, we came over and jogged out to include that 25-foot, then jogged back into the apparent use of it.
Okay.
And it's indicated that one issue that was raised by one of the attendees at the public hearing, referring to the statute that applies to creating a new roadway, it's not applicable in this instance. You know, I think you indicated there's what, minimum 40-foot.
That's what he, yeah, interpretation.
And that is in the statute if we were going to set out a new roadway.
If we were building a new roadway.
We are recognizing that roadway, public way that has existed and under the doctrine of use, so that's why that is, his position is not well taken.
Okay. All right, so you will, you will complete the appropriate paperwork for us to.
I need an ordinance number, Bobby.
I'll get you one.
Okay.
And so I think at our last meeting, the public meeting, we indicated that we would let the adjacent property owners know when we contemplated taking final action. So we'll want to communicate with those folks and I think your office has their, has all the names and addresses.
Correct. And we've sent out packages to all of them.
I've got those too. I can get them to Bobby here.
Okay.
So we'll do that again. When you settle on what date you want this to come forward.
Okay.
Then we will notify the MS too.
Well, is everybody going to be available next week?
I don't think so. So it'll be in a few weeks, but I think the important thing is as long as we get it done before it snows. We should be all right. I think, I have confidence that we can do that. Thanks, Gordon. Okay, so on the settlement agreement, is that we need to take final action on that? Approve that?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the settlement agreement and general release of claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. This just requires the president's signature.
That's correct.
All right. And how many copies do you need? Just to, thank you.
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
You've argued with the, having, having.
See, Dan Burke is here, so he asked our questions for a while. Why don't we go ahead and skip forward to Dan?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you, Dan?
I'm doing well.
Good.
So we have, on the agenda, there's four things. I have a fifth thing I'd like to discuss if we have.
Oh, you can't add any, sorry.
It's really simple, I promise. So the first thing on the agenda is Purdue Extension amended contract. I believe I notified everybody via email on that situation. It was amended by Purdue University's attorney. It was redlined. Ron reviewed it and said it was fine. Essentially what they did was they removed the HIPAA rule. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct. And that was the only subsequent change and it really wasn't subsequent.
Yes, there was nothing major with it. They, so they changed the HIPAA rule on it and then they changed the name from Purdue Extension to Purdue University.
And so what's the, from your perspective, what's the issue of removing HIPAA? What was the context?
They, they believe they weren't in the non.
I think we put it in as a template factor because some of the other contracts that we'll have through, will definitely have HIPAA implications to the extent that they're dealing with personal health information, so.
Okay, so this.
It was part of this template that, or the engagement, limited engagement that Purdue Extension, Purdue was to have for this contract, wasn't really applicable. My point was, well, if it's not applicable, there's no harm in leaving it in, but that's.
And they thought if it's not applicable, there's no harm in taking it out.
I tried that approach and it didn't work. So, yeah, there's only two of the contracts that don't deal with anything medical and that's the Boys and Girls Club and Purdue Extension. Bridges for Life is kind of in the middle somewhere there, but, so that is my, my request for this contract is for the commissioners to approve them.
It was approved yesterday, recommended for approval by the board.
Yeah, it was.
Move for approval. I move for approval of the extension contract with Purdue University.
It's the Purdue University contract. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Purdue University contract with Health First Funding. And this just requires the president's signature?
Correct. You're approving it under this provision that requires healthcare provider agreements to be entered into by the health department to be approved by the executive.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Second on the agenda is the SoftWorks software. I spoke with the Health Board here today and they approved this as well. The software would help us on the financial end of the department. It would take our bookkeeper's spreadsheet. She has a spreadsheet for each account we have, which is several, and it will combine it onto the software. The county highway uses this software, it has for a while, and it works out really well for them with all their budgets that they have. If you have an appropriation for $20,000 and you try to spend beyond that $20,000, the software won't let you. So it kicks back a red flag and tells you that you're not able to. Otter's office was in part of that meeting as well, so they heard the presentation. The business has been in business for 40-plus years and they deal with mainly government entities, schools, local governments. But the commissioner's approval, I'd like to move forward with the software.
The only question I had that came out of yesterday's Health Board meeting was, you know, it's very compelling, the fact that the Highway Department has had good experience with this SoftWorks organization, but I did not hear that our IT department, Craig Easton, was involved in any of the discussions. I just would like to hear that you've touched base with Craig.
I did. I spoke with Craig and he had no objections to the software. That was my question, yeah.
Yeah, the Highway Department has really found this to be very helpful, so I'd like to move that we also approve the SoftWorks software agreement.
And what's the cost?
The cost is, for the software itself, it's a one-time purchase. It's $7,995. And then an annual maintenance contract is, I believe the price, I believe they quoted $1,995. So one-time purchase of $8,000 and $2,000 a year essentially to keep it. And that involves all updates, any modifications we want, we can customize it and they don't charge any more than what the $2,000 is. And you have a line item for that? I do. I had it broke down in yesterday's meeting. I don't think I brought it to that.
Which fund are you paying it out of, Dan?
Most likely Health First Indiana.
Okay.
If not, I have health maintenance, I got a few funds. I had it broke down. I apologize for not bringing that with me.
No problem.
It was very detailed yesterday.
So Mr. Butters has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Third thing on the agenda is the vital record storage. If you're aware, we have several historical books in the back room that are protected by a fireproof door, not proof, retardant for up to so many hours. Those books are stored vertically on metal shelving and we pay approximately $2,000 to $3,000 every year to have them rebound because it's tearing them apart every time they get pulled off the shelf. Thank you for that. So we kind of looked around for different shelving options. We got with Debbie at the clerk of courts and she showed us what we, they use over there and how it helps them. So we received a quote for that company and it would supply room for every book we have plus anything additional that we have. Now, obviously, we're not getting more historical books, but we do have documents we want to preserve. There'd be one vertical cabinet, one horizontal cabinet. The overall cost is a little steep, but I think it would pay off in the end. And that is $14,000, I believe I sent everyone a copy as well, $14,322. That I get ready to break down for you. I remember that.
And it will fit in the room that it's currently stored in?
Correct. I measured both the dimensions of the horizontal and vertical cabinet. Kind of laid some tape out on the floor to represent the size of the cabinets, make sure the drawers would open up and not hit the other cabinet, all that good stuff. So they will fit into the dimensions of that closet.
Steve, any comment?
Are these specifically one, one type or is there other sources for this? If not, we'll need three quotes.
That I can't answer. I didn't do the research on this. It was done two to three months ago.
I think these are some of the ones that are used in our office.
Correct.
The quarter's office, is that right?
Yeah, these, the storage units allow books to be stored horizontally instead of vertically and their own rollouts. I have pictures of.
But I think there's an element of compatibility of existing fixtures in other departments. They would wait for choosing this.
But it wouldn't need to be compatible, right?
Right.
I mean, this is specifically for their books.
Because they don't have any over there. This would be starting from scratch.
Is there a single source? Is that your question then or not?
Yeah, I don't know the cabinets or the.
I understand what you're saying. I have no problem going out and getting, trying to get two more quotes of similar style and size.
And there's no particular urgency to get this done in a certain timeframe?
I think we do our due diligence just to make sure that we're covered.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
I have a question. I used to do a little volunteer work at a museum where documents were really, really old, you know, over 100 years old, and volunteers had to wear cotton gloves or something when handling really old papers. I'm wondering when your people go in to examine 1879-year-old records, do they wear any protective things to?
They do not. They do not. The only stipulations that we're aware of from the State Department of Health, vital records division, is that those books cannot be photographed because there's something about the flash in the paper. I'm not sure on the science on that, but that's, most of viewing is done by the public, not our registrars. We have to reference those books occasionally, but most of the time it's done for genealogy research and stuff from the public.
Ah, so they could come in with greasy fry fingers.
Absolutely. We could create a policy, you know, a white glove type policy, you know, if the.
Yeah, those gloves are pretty cheap. I think, I don't think surgical gloves are as ideal as.
We have plenty of those though.
Yeah. They're better than nothing because, you know, people can go to a drive-through and straight to your building. So just because they are pretty fragile and any kind of risk could really deteriorate that paper.
Yeah, we can look into other counties and see if they have any policies similar to what you're asking. So I'll look for a couple more quotes on those cabinets.
Good, good.
The third thing, we've got the fourth thing, I guess, is the, we voted on it in the meeting the other day, or you voted on it in the meeting the other day, contention on the Health Board approving the XRF resourcing. The Health Board did approve that, so I'm assuming I still have permission to move forward with it.
Absolutely. That's correct.
And the last thing I have is I sent a copy off to everyone too, is Virgins. It's a company out of Indianapolis. They're a contracting company that handles medical, the medical profession. They have the ability to supply us with everything from a medical assistant all the way up to a nurse practitioner or physician assistant and possibly an MD if that was requested. As of right now, we're still working out different things, but I'd like permission to move forward with them and get a true written proposal for what we need.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't. I mean, that's why we kind of wanted you to do so. So as stipulated in their first proposal, salary plus 35% was their, their wage.
Right.
Our cost to them.
I don't know how they do that for 35%.
What's that?
They must really have those medical people pay a steep premium for their health insurance.
I would assume, because they take our wage and we, we set the wage, they don't, and that they take the 35% out. Maybe quantity, you know, maybe they have a lot, you know. I don't, I can't.
I'm not questioning that because that's, that's a pretty good deal. Did you have to negotiate that or?
No, that's their standard.
That's their standard. So they're.
And you indicated you had another potential entity you were exploring.
Correct. I spoke with Knowledge Staffing yesterday morning prior to the Health Board meeting. I don't have anything from him in written form yet, but it sounds like they're going to be spot on with the 35%. The only reduction in price is if we did our own recruiting, then they would reduce that 35%, but they didn't give me a solid number as far as what they would reduce that for. I think I would prefer them to do the recruiting.
I think you indicated.
They have the outreach that we don't have.
There is the ability to offer employment to any of the professionals that they provide under our agreement.
Correct.
I assume there's a buyout though, is there not?
They didn't mention a buyout. They told me that, because I asked both companies that question and they said, absolutely. I said, we're at this point, we're not looking to attempt to hire, but maybe in the future if that came up, is that a possibility? They said, absolutely, they do it all the time. And then they have about a two-week turnaround, both companies, about two weeks.
Yes, it's a week. We'll deal with that when it comes to nature.
Well, and that might be something you follow up with and talk to them further to find out if there's a buyout cost. Okay, so have, have you met with counsel yet on this tip?
I have not. I'm scheduled to meet with them tonight. I proposed a budget yesterday at the Health Board meeting. That was a little bit different from the Virgins. The Health Board approved it, so I'll approach counsel tonight to see what they're.
Good, good. Well, keep us in the loop, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
While Dan's here, we'd gotten a letter, or actually Dan had gotten it, then it got passed to EMA and then it got passed to me from, from, yeah, from IDIM. And the letter is indicating, and it is apparently a fact, I went back and looked at commissioner minutes, but we had a, the tank, the fuel tank that serves the generator in, in this building apparently had a leak in 1992 and was reported to IDIM by the Health Department, Martell.
Correct.
When you read this, it, what they're asking of us, it looks like, it reads like it just happened a couple days ago, 32 years ago. And, and what they're asking for, I'm not sure we can find.
I think the, at the end of the day, you think they'll be happy with an environmental restricted covenant on the area that would limit.
I don't know.
That's what we did with the jail side. Side, I understand.
So would you have a report on this or any documentation? Because there, apparently there were soil tests taken, because at least the commissioners approved for soil tests. Now, I don't know whether the results of those tests were. What do you think?
Well, I can promise you, we have no electronic records. So I've been in the warehouse over off Second Street several, several times over the past years and I have not found any environmental records over there at all. That's all been medical, medical records. So I can't answer that with 100% certainty, but I'm 95% confident that we will not find that record over in that warehouse and that will be the only place it could possibly be.
Would there have been a record? I mean, what would have been generated?
I seriously doubt it. Like today's leaders, if I receive a notification from IDIM that there's a leak in, let's say in a gas station, they send it to me as an informative letter. I have no action to take. So I review it and typically after that, I ditch it. I mean, I'm not statutory involved in that. That's, that's all IDIM. So, yeah, we don't keep records that we're not, we don't have to hand it in a sense.
And we have no reason, we don't know why this came up 32 years later and this slow day at IDIM and.
No. I posed the question via an email, replying to the email and I received no response.
And I called and I received no response. I think somebody was retiring and I went out to ask, get some kind of reference to this. Somebody put the word back on him and said, who sent those? You find them.
You find them.
You got them.
Have you tried to contact them yet?
I have. I called this morning and got.
I tried. I called twice yesterday.
Would you mind asking, when you do make contact, what triggered this inquiry?
Sure, I mean, I, as you read that, it's, it's like it happened just last week of what I'm supposed to supply. And, and to recreate that, because we, we have, I'm going to assume we have since fixed this because now there's a, there's a spillage concrete tank or a basin underneath it and to get soil tests, it will be impossible.
Or just.
Yeah, I mean, I.
You know, it just, it just occurs to me that is somehow this incident in 92 connected to, we just did soil tests when we removed the tanks at the Highway Department in the last month or so. And somehow that, those tests trigger this letter.
And do we have records of those tests and are we?
No, we better, we better find out.
There's a facility number on that, there's a facility number ID on that letter and when you pull that ID up, it comes up to Casey's General Store in Green County.
Maybe it is.
Maybe it is. But the event is Wayne County, but the facility number is not here. So I, anyway, I guess I bring this to your attention. If in fact we have to recreate these tests, it's going to be expensive. My guess is.
Well, because now it would be underneath.
Yeah.
What, what is a 32-year-old.
32-years-old.
Concrete well. So we'll continue to.
Well, I would not, well, I would not agree to redo the test. I think I'd throw at them that we will consider environmentally restricted covenant over a defined area, get it surveyed off, Gordon, and indicate that there'll be no development beyond what's there and give them a description of what's there. I mean, that's really what would be a remedy, if there is a remedy.
Yeah, that satisfies the environmental risk.
If we satisfy the environmental risk, that just makes sure that we don't do anything in the way of our use as owner to exacerbate the risk or to enhance the danger going forward.
And that would stand in perpetuity, right?
Correct.
So why would they be?
Totally leave by IDIM.
Whichever comes first.
Depends on who retires at IDIM.
One thing before I depart, there's several things going to be out in the press. Last week, we had a semi-deceased bat discovered at a West Side school.
Semi-deceased?
Semi-deceased, so it was not quite deceased and then by the time we got it, it was deceased. I believe some children, they're a little kitty and nothing with it. But we sent it all for testing. The lab called me on Saturday, it tested positive for rabies. So we had to notify the school, do the press release, all that. We technically didn't do an official press release, we're kind of waiting for the admin to contact all the parents before we create chaos. So just to give you a heads up on that.
Not aware of any children being.
To our knowledge, there is no human contact or animal contact. I notified Reed Hospital Emergency Room and Infectious Disease Control in case they had somebody in with some weird symptoms, they would note to, to look for it, I guess.
What about veterinarians? Is there a way to inform local veterinarians?
We received the animal from a veterinarian, so they, the veterinarian actually went to the site and picked up the bat, so we received it from them. So, yeah, they have their own network of notification. Very seldom do we get something from a homeowner, it typically comes from a vet, but.
So there is a network of information?
Correct. Animal Care Alliance does most of it.
Great, great.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
Happy day.
Appreciate it.
Once I learned that, I went back and checked my vet records.
Steve?
All right, you have your weekly update for it in front of you. The NX generator is in Indiana somewhere. We're waiting on the switchgear to come before they'll deliver it because they'll, they'll want to use one-time crane rental to put it in place. So I've talked to the contractor because we want to make sure as we coordinate this switch over that we have as least amount of downtime as possible. As you know, the pumps in this building run all the time and they have to continuously be powered up. 911 can survive for a little bit in the mobile command center. Obviously, the servers that are on this can't be down through the week, so. So going to meet with the contractor next Monday and we'll work out a plan for this transition. The chamber technology, as you can hear, we're, we're up and running and we're still tweaking the, the system a bit. But everything is in place. The control panels are in place. The tablet control is in place. Microphones are all in place, new speakers, and now it's just a matter of, of fine tuning it.
Did you notice the little bit of feedback from the podium?
I did. And I'll, I'll get with Caleb after the meeting to work on that a little bit. The courthouse elevator study, as you know, they were here last week and that timeline on that, you should start to see, get some information back within a couple of weeks on that. Coleman Roof and Coleman Ceiling Project, remember that those have gone out for bid. You'll get the bids on September 11th. And we have a pre-bid for potential contractors at the Coleman on September 4th. The expo hall HVAC is, is operational. They were working on the, insulating the outside ductwork. That's on the outside of the building. That will be insulated to keep it from cold and hot. And after that's done, the painting, and then that'll be finished.
And the, the fan, the exhaust fan is being rewired? Is that, it's done now?
Yeah, it's, it's operational. We can control it manually.
All right, thank you.
And then the horse pound, horse park roof, talked to the contractor yesterday and he thought it would be finished before the end of the week on that. And then the landscape hardscape, that's the general title like that until we zero in on what that will look like. But remember, you've entered into your contract with LWC and our timeframe is to put that out for bids, as I recall, in October. And then lower right-hand corner are your front balances. That's all I have.
All right. Questions for Steve? Okay. Then we have the claims.
Yes. Move for approval, claims as follow. Perf and federal payroll taxes dated August 23rd. Done flex and garnishment claims dated August 23rd. Payroll, I think you wrote this off thin. Oh, it's both sides. Payroll dated August 23rd. Jury duty dated August 15th. Tax sale payment dated August 19th. Claims and a guardian ad lata casa claims included with regular claims this time dated August 21st. Move for approval of all of these.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve those claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Also move for approval of minutes dated August 14th.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the August 14th minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Also have a little update on the opioid settlement reporting requirement. On Friday, the auditor received notification of the deadline to provide information regarding the opioid settlement accountability report. And it's a little earlier this year than last. September 6th is our deadline to provide that to the contractor. But at 3:25 yesterday, which was when I received it, I don't know why they informed the auditors first. Maybe some auditors get to do this lovely task. And what they've done is have errors again in this. They're asking for a report going back to August of 23, but they have the total settlement fund going back to December of 22. So I'm going to have to rectify the error in their reporting requirements because we received our first payment in 22, but they're asking for accounting of the funds that arrived since August 23. So until that discrepancy is resolved, I don't want to, you know, have fund reporting for the long period of time. So, and also a little heads up, they are requiring name, phone number, email address for every principal contacted, every recipient. And I don't have direct phone numbers and emails for each and every municipal public safety individual. So I'm going to have to sit down with you. I'll give you a list of all of the contact information.
If you see the list, I can write it down or something.
That would be great. I, I, I have it for the nonprofits, but for all the public safety individuals, I'll need your help on that, Brad. I don't anticipate having any problems satisfying this.
I have sent emails out to all those municipalities to them.
September 1. I thought we'd have two weeks to turn this around, but five days is plenty. It's just Labor Day weekend. I'm not going anywhere. But the good news is the reporting requirements have been scaled back. The first year, they, they required a lot more detail, you know, what has been spent, what is remaining to be spent and why and all that sort of thing. Now they're just saying, what did you spend it on and how's it going to benefit if it was restricted? If it's unrestricted, it's just, hey, who'd you give it to? How much? So that's been some sort of a concern, so.
So you're going to call them, find out?
Right.
What's the date you really need? Because have they already accounted for the money? You don't have to continue with the stuff that was in 22.
Yeah, this contractor, I mean, every time the settlement conversation occurs, there's an error.
So that you're referring to the contractor?
Right. There's a contractor, EGIS US is the contractor that's handling this.
Okay.
And their, their reporting mechanism is very, every time you send them something, you cannot retrieve it. It's, it's punishing, okay? Well, it's their, it's their bat and ball. But I just want to make sure that, because I have a feeling that this contractor knows people, it just stayed more of accounts.
That could be, could be. All right. Bobby, do we have anything on your list that we need to take care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Steve, anything else?
So I'll refer back to a letter that I'd given or some information I'd given Ron. So we'd gotten an, an email from an individual and just for Brad's little background, so you understand this group, this mess. Abington is an unincorporated community, so it's all in the county. When it was plotted in the 1800s, there's a section right in the middle of town called the Public Square. And it was dedicated to public use back in the 1800s. And there was a couple of roads that went around it. Sometime several years ago, we vacated those roads and put the road right down the center. So the road that goes, so Potter Shop that goes right through the center of it now is a county road. Those two that are outside of the county square, Public Square were vacated. Half went to the property in the south and north. Rest of it stayed with the Public Square. The Abington Fire Department sits on property on the Public Square. But the lot directly underneath the main fire department is owned by the township. There was a thing, a building built onto the existing fire department and it lies on county property. We have an agreement, which I was not aware of until we started looking for this. I think, what is it, Ron, a 50-year agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, 50-year agreement that runs through 2030, 2030 with the township so that they can use that ground that the fire department sits on. The building was built by the Abington Fire Department, which is a not-for-profit agency. It's not a governmental agency. Okay, so you've got three players here. We received a complaint that the building is unsafe. So I'm just, just telling you this.
We got it. We, we, so we got it from who? I mean.
The fire department had a fundraiser in it.
Bless you.
And the person who attended the fundraiser thought, in his opinion, the building was unsafe.
Okay. The chicken fry? It was chicken fry fundraiser?
I don't know what kind of fundraiser it was. So it would seem to me, Ron, you correct me by my own, that if in fact, we run this string out, we're a substantial party to this since we own the land underneath part of it. And we have a lease that says that the township will be responsible for all maintenance and I forget how it's worded.
It really doesn't say, quite say that, or I was hoping.
I'd like it to say that.
I think it says it, yeah.
Can we make it say that?
Well, I think, I think what we want to do is talk to these folks and try to develop a collaborative way. If in fact, it is unsafe to resolve the issue, I don't think they're exactly laden with cash, but I think we could probably get them to participate and should.
So.
I think the implication would be, A, that the building has probably been dedicated to the, to the land. Its removal at the end of the lease would be, I suppose theoretically possible, but I would think very costly. And is, is there an entity left that is accessory interest of the owner of the building per se?
Well. I don't know.
And are we going to have our building, this act you're going to?
Yeah, I, I'm just forewarning you that where this may or may not go. And I feel like we have a responsibility to follow up with the complaint.
Absolutely.
But Abington Commons, I don't think it ever existed in its original identity. That's who our lease is with.
Yeah, Abington.
Commons.
Commons.
The signatory to the lease is Abington Township.
Correct.
And its advisory board, which is what you would expect. So it's obviously not the most artful bit of all your 50 years or 40 some years later, but I think it begs the problem. I think the issue is just first, let's get a handle on health sector of the problem.
Yeah, so if in fact, you know, we find this to be unsafe, I'm sure that you as the commissioner will get a call from someone.
Did they indicate the nature of the hazards or the unsafetiness of it?
Support posts are rotten.
And so we went through that at the fairgrounds and we have replaced some of the posts that were starting to rot. So it could be as simple as replacing a couple of posts. Let's, let's find out what the issue is.
It might not be very expensive.
I just want you to figure it out. They may get a call as the commissioners and.
So it just, you know, confirms the, the old adage that no good deed goes unpunished.
I guess.
50 years later.
I wonder if they donate to fundraisers or not.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
That maybe they made enough in their fundraiser to, to repair the building. So anyway, first, we'll find out what are the issues? Is it unsafe? Is it cosmetic? Is it whatever? So, okay. Keep us posted. Interesting. I have a letter from Achieva Resources. This is their annual appeal to the county to contribute to their guardianship program. And they are requesting, once again, that the county provide them with $16,000 towards the match. That's been the number for several years.
Who matches it? It's foundation?
No, it's actually, I think, the Supreme Court.
Oh, okay.
So the Supreme Court provides.
This is part of the guardian ad lata program.
The adult guardianship program through the Supreme Court. So that Achieva does this in a region, Wayne County being one of those. One of the counties, along with Fay and a couple of others. I think for the last few years at least, the council has, has put a line item in their budget to pay Achieva at some point during the year. So my suggestion is that, that we would.
Approve that, subject to council's.
And just a, a recommendation to council that it, that it be funded.
On my condition.
We have a motion?
Second, I'd like to discuss this. We did not include that among the nonprofits in our.
No, because for the last several years, it's been in the council's budget.
Right. Historically, going back maybe eight years, Achieva came to the commissioners and we deferred to council for that decision. And for some reason, we could not get a majority on the council vote. Do you remember that, Ron? And so commissioners did not recommend to council that we do this. I was in the minority, but the council went ahead and made it a council funded. So I don't imagine there would be a problem getting that being a commissioner recommended budget addition. Do you anticipate that?
I'm, I'm not suggesting that it go back into the commissioner's budget. I'm suggesting we recommend to council that they fund this.
From their.
And that's my motion.
Okay, just because it's, it's not been because of the historical.
Correct.
Path that has taken.
Now I want to clarify, that was my motion.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Okay, very good. I, I did that.
And so you second on that basis that we're recommending that the council include this in their budget?
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Brad, anything? Ron, anything else?
I think I do now after Dan left, I thought there'd be another item in his agenda. But at yesterday's meeting of the local health board, they voted to recommend the termination of the contract with the physician assistant, which under, it's without cause. Under the terms of the contract, it can be terminated within, on 15 calendar days advanced notice. That was a unanimous vote of the board. And so that comes to you as their recommendation and I think you need to take final action on that.
Make a motion that we approve the termination of that contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The notice I think has been prepared. I reviewed it with Dan. I think it'll be delivered. I think there, obviously, he, he has to be paid during that 15-day notice period. And I think he's going to help and assist in transitioning any pending matters so that hopefully nothing falls through the cracks.
Okay, good.
And I think obviously looking at your presentation on virgins as well as the knowledge, whatever they were. Those options I think will be probably looked toward in potentially getting a replacement of that position. I think also we have, as you're aware, we should be in the process of trying to find an executive.
Director.
Director, not an executive director.
A director.
Director of the, of the.
The Health Department.
Of the Health Department to oversee the two deputy directors or the two deputy director positions.
Right.
And, and with that also, I believe Dr. Jepmore has announced his intent to resign his position as local health officer, but this board feels that the sequence needs to be getting the directorship in place first. And then Dr. Jepmore, I think is doing a. directorship in place first, and then Dr. Jettmore, I think, is doing fundamental-ish things that need to be done by a local health officer, the signing of death certificates, birth certificates, hopes of things in the document preservation. So that's kind of where we are, and I think, I'm sure that the board, Dr. Rider, we're working with HR to try to keep these processes.
Anything else?
While we're on health board issues, we probably should be working with council and the mayor to remind them that they will be having appointments coming up to that board because that's just a few months off, so this will be the first time they will have appointments to that board, and it's very important to get really good candidates going forward. We just need to put that on our reminder list that, and make the recommendation as to who, I've sort of forgot where we left it, you know, as to how we phase in the mayor and the council.
I've got that.
Do you have that? Maybe we could put that on their September to-do list.
Good. Thank you.
And I have talked with the sheriff and reminded him, and he was well aware of it. I didn't need to be the reminder that our contract with QCC, Quality Correctional Care, expires at the end, I think, of February.
February. I think it's February.
2025, which is kind of.
It's right around the corner.
Well, it's a lot quicker, and it's kind of a default date that we backed into, but we missed other dates in prior contracts.
And they've been real good about not raising the price during that.
Isn't there a one-year extension?
There's the potential for a one-year automatic extension. He's aware of that, I don't know if, it's kind of like silent, if you do nothing, then it happens, so I don't know if.
And is that, that's only at our option?
No, it has to be mutual.
Okay.
So.
Well.
You know, council, that's their, they'll have to figure out how to build that budget, I think.
Steve, any feedback on, you were trying to set a meeting of the, of the security committee? Any progress there?
Yep.
That you want to do that in the near future, right?
I want one the next weekday.
Okay, keep us posted. All right, Mary Ann, you handed us this, this document before the meeting started.
Yeah, but first let me deal with another animal issue. I don't know if I'm the only one, or if we all received a request for a proclamation to make September National Service Dog Month and.
I think you're the only one that got that.
You didn't get it either, Brad? I had some questions about it, so I emailed the woman who ostensibly was from Centerville, but I was a little hinky, and asked for her phone number so we could talk about this. We don't normally dedicate whole months, you know, we'll do individuals. So I just wondered if you both felt the same way, but I'm pending that conversation. I got the feeling this was a questionable request. So if it's okay with you, while we all support service dogs, as long as there's some questions on the table, I'm going to defer until the questions are resolved, okay?
Fair enough.
Not with me.
Okay. Now, on to the animal welfare initiative, I guess I'll call it. I've sent you a draft of strategic approach, and there are some things that I hope that we could at least have agreement with the mayor. Because this is something that I don't think the county alone can resolve because cats and dogs do not understand geopolitical boundaries. And I believe, while we can only really assume responsibility for domestic animals within our county boundaries and have fiscal responsibility for them, we have never really asked smaller municipalities to carry any of the water for us. So in the first objective, I think it's more the conversation to say that if we're really going to resolve some issues that have come to light in recent years about our animal welfare condition, we need to include all municipalities, not just Richmond, as we go forward. And thanks to Brad, I think we have a pretty good relationship with law enforcement and all of the smaller municipalities.
We're built on it, yeah.
Yeah, and I think reaching out to them because every, you know, the animal issue affects every single corner of the county, and there are hotter spots than others. So I don't expect us to go over every aspect here, but this particular discipline of having a stated goal, a strategy on how it's accomplished and the rationale for it, and then with some tactics as to how you achieve that goal, is the discipline for, that I had to practice for many years in the development of new product introductions. And without understanding exactly what your objectives are, you can end up missing the target at the end. So I would just hope that over the next week, we can have agreement on exactly what our commonality is on what we want to accomplish. And I think it truly is a reduction in the number of stray, feral, abused, neglected, aggressive, sheltered and diseased cats and dogs around the county. If that doesn't include the all, I don't think, this is just a draft, I would certainly like to include everyone's thoughts on that. And with the recent detection of rabies in wildlife, I think that underscores the need for much expanded veterinary care because we all know that there are cats and dogs out there without rabies shots. So unless you would want to discuss this more, I'd be happy to discuss it now. Is everybody going to be here next Wednesday?
No, no. So let's, give us some time to digest this and to follow up with some folks on questions. But I see that under tactics, professional veterinarian-led study of animal welfare conditions throughout the county is in alignment with the proposed contract for, for Dr. Stacy.
Right.
On getting started in September. So do you have any other issues with this contract other than making it countywide as opposed to the unincorporated parts of the county?
No, I agree wholeheartedly that it must be countywide.
Yeah, that's my.
So, so are we ready? Of course, it's going to require not only our approval, but the city and, and Dr. Kostiak's approval.
I don't think you're ready to execute, but we can, you can at least approve this draft as being.
The draft with the change.
From the commissioner's perspective.
With the change that.
How many final drafts for presentation?
So that we can get it out to, I think, the city and.
City has it, I sent it to AJ. At the same time, I sent it to you with the note, with the note that, you know, it's subject to any changes you might have.
So, so let's, are we ready for an informal, informal motion that, that this is what we're looking at as a final draft to be shared with the city and Dr. Kostiak to, for, before final approval?
I'll make that change and if submitted to AJ's, having been approved as.
And I'll move that we approve this.
amended version.
Amended version of the agreement with Dr. Kostiak.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
You know, just as, you know, ideally, we could have a meeting of all of the councils, Cambridge and Hagerstown, Centerville, Felton City, Richmond, to approve all of these recommended tactics. I think some of these tactics we will just have to adopt, like we have already in theory approved the acceptance of funding of a spay neuter clinic by the license plate fund. You know, when people buy one of those animal friendly license plates that goes into a fund to do spay neuter clinics, I think we've already.
On a statewide basis, right?
It's whatever, you see one of those animal places, right? And I've made contact, and they were, they set a date and everything, but it was an April date, and the veterinarian refused to come to our fairgrounds because the building that we had offered wasn't air-conditioned. And she said it's going to be too hot in April for me to work in an unconditioned building.
Well, I guess we'll have to shoot for March.
Or do it in an air-conditioned building.
Which is one of the things that Dr. Kostiak will be looking at, so.
Right, but she hadn't mentioned that. I'm not sure she's aware of the license, she's not from Indiana, so I'm not sure she's aware of Indiana's state-funded.
Pretty sure she is, yes. Okay, Mark, have you got anything for us?
No.
Okay, 3 o'clock this afternoon for the exit interview. All right?
In here.
In here?
I guess.
That'll work. All right. Anything else? Then we are adjourned.